Baltimore City Council Budget and Appropriations Committee, session eight at 8:00 PM. Human Resource Management. We've got the Department of Human Resources and the Labor Commissioner. Joined by Council President Jack Young, Vice President of the City Council, Councilwoman Sharon Green-Milton from the Sixth District, Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Leon Pinkett from the Seventh District, Councilman Bill Henry from the Fourth, Councilman Ryan Dorsey from the Third, and we'll be joined in a moment by Councilman Brandon Scott from the Second, and Councilman Chris Burnett from the Eighth. Directly to my right is Marguerite Curran, Staff to the Committee. Also joined by Kara Kuntz, Legislative Director for Council President Young, representing the Mayor, Karen Stokes, and Karan Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's everyone. We're going to do a panel for this one with the two agencies, DHR and the Labor Commissioner. Ms. Tally, it looks like you're getting started off. If you could give us kind of a 10-minute presentation, and then we'll get right into questions with the council so we can get out of here as expeditiously as possible. If you could first please introduce everyone on your senior team that's joined us today, and then we'll get going. And we're also joined by Councilwoman Shannon Snead from the Thirteenth District.
Okay. Good evening, members of the City Council. Thank you for your time. So I will start off by introducing myself. I'm Mary Tally. I'm the Director-in-Chief Human Capital Officer for the Department of Human Resources.
Can you please speak into the microphone? The mics at your desk should be on. The reason I ask that is because this is being streamed live and on TV, so they can't hear you unless you speak into the mic.
Yeah, my name is Ray Gulhar. I'm Chief Employee Benefits in Ajant.
Latonya Bryant, Deputy Director for HR Administration.
Justia Smith, Deputy Director for HR Operations.
And, oh, Ms. Carter.
Sandra Curtis, Chief Learning and Development.
Good evening, Nicole Carter, Chief of Recruitment and Talent Acquisition.
Hello, Tanya Brinkley, Chief of HR Information Systems.
Good evening, Avalee Samaken, Chief of Shared Services.
Good evening, Larry Harper, Sure, Chief of Classification and Compensation.
Thank you.
Okay, so the first service we're going to talk about is 771 Benefits Administration. This service is responsible for administering the employee benefits plans, which includes the medical plans, the prescription drug plans, life insurance, vision, dental, as well as two flexible spending accounts, and they also administer our unemployment insurance benefits and the employee assistance program. This service saw in 2016, we saw increased participation in our wellness programs due to our increased outreach initiatives across 61 locations citywide. This attributed to 197 wellness programs offerings and monetary and non-monetary incentives offered to our participants. The Benefits Comparison Tool, which allows employees to compare the benefits before they actually select them to make sure that they're making the appropriate choices for them, also resulted in increased participation in our benefits programs as well as the wellness programs. In fiscal year 15, we had 450 of our eligible employees participate in our programs. In fiscal year 16, we had 584 employees of 12,217 eligible participate in our programs. And for 2017, we are, we had 1,220 of our 12,200 eligible employees participate in our programs. The next service, Civil Service Management. Civil Service Management includes the Classification and Compensation Division, the Recruitment and Talent Acquisition Division, and all of, and the Civil Service Commission, which is also managed by DHR's Policy Division. The Classification and Compensation Division is responsible for creating positions as well as reclassifying positions, as well as conducting organizational studies, compensation studies, and classifying positions across all city agencies. They are also responsible for, I'm sorry, the Civil Service is responsible for hearing grievances and making recommendations on the outcome of those grievances, as well as other civil service activities. And the Commission is currently comprised of three members. In fiscal year 16, 1,002 submissions and projects were completed by the Classification and Compensation Division, and our major budget outcomes, or our major budget items for classification and compensation involved 1,002 projects being completed. I'm sorry, is that within deadline? Within deadline. Next service, COB University? Okay. COB University is responsible for our learning and development initiatives across city agencies. They are responsible for our course development as well as course training. Currently, we are involved in new employee orientation, which will soon be moving to an online platform, customer service, and virtually all soft skills training. We also provide diversity training, sexual harassment training, and workplace violence training. This model is currently a self-sufficiency model, which means that the, that the division is responsible for earning its own revenue. So for fiscal year 2016, the Training Division earned $437,462 in revenue, and in fiscal year 16, for the MAPS-covered employees who received performance management training, there were 1,179 participants totaling 93 percent of our MAPS employee population. I think those were all the services. Are there any questions?
Let's go to Labor Commissioner, and then we'll do questions. Henry next. Got it. Dorsey. Mullet gave us some money to do this electronically.
I mean, we could buzz in like during a game show.
That's exactly what I mean, Councilman Henry.
That would be outstanding. Okay.
You read my mind.
Let's play budget theory.
Good evening, everyone. The Office of the Labor Commissioner was created by city ordinance to be the professional labor relations for the mayor. The Labor Commissioner acts as the, a member of the bargaining team for every negotiations. Currently, we're in negotiations with ASME Local 44, ASME Local 558, ASME Local 2202, and the City Union of Baltimore. We've completed negotiations with the firefighters, and they are, their contract is practically ready to go to the Board of Estimates. We have a few more weeks to do and signing. We also do meet and confer with MAPS. That was finished today, so they'll be finished pretty soon. And as we speak, the fire officers are having a ratification meeting for their contract. What we negotiate are terms and conditions of employment, and a lot of the things that we do are similar to the Department of Human Resources. They administer the benefits. We negotiate the benefits with the unions. We also are responsible for being hearing officers for grievances, and as of the change in the city charter, we are responsible for termination hearings, suspensions of 30 days or more, and involuntary demotions. And we found in the last year that's been an uptick in employees coming to the, to the Labor Commissioner's office for termination hearings, because unlike the Civil Service Commission, when you come to the Office of the Labor Commissioner, if you're not satisfied with the decision, you have a right to go to arbitration. And that's primarily what we do. In addition to that, well, we also meet with agency heads regarding changes that they want. For example, right now, we're meeting with the Police Department, the Crime Lab Technicians. In the contracts, there are stated hours of work, and typically, the hours are seven hours and 33 minutes, or eight hours, and what the Crime Lab wants to be more effective and more efficient, they want their employees to work four 10-hour days. So we're currently working with the Police Department's Crime Lab Division, as well as the City Union of Baltimore, and MAPS to change the work hours.
Thank you. Council President?
Thank you. Madam Labor Commissioner, if you could give us an update on all of the contracts, let us know whether they've won two or three years?
Okay.
And what's the status of, or when we'll be negotiating with them again? So I guess when you give us the years that will cover all of that?
Okay, well, I'll start-
Like if it's one year, two year, or three year.
Okay. I'll start with the City Union of Baltimore Cub, since they represent the most employees in the city, including office support, public works inspectors, recreation. The Cub contract expired last year, and we've been in negotiations for a year. We had an outstanding issues, issue concerning a portion of their bargaining unit, and that's resolved. So our next meeting with Cub is next week. We desire to reach agreement, and so does Cub, so that's where we are. Their contract has expired, but we're going to negotiate a two-year contract with them. The same with Local 44. Their contract has expired. They're meeting, their team is meeting this week, and we're meeting with them next week in anticipation of concluding negotiations. ASME Locals 44, 558, and 2202. 44 represents the most employees, and that would be your labor trades, laborers, carpenters, electricians, and those type of employees. Local 558 is community health nurses strictly in the Baltimore City Health Department, and Local 20202 is the human service workers. So they negotiate together, and we'll negotiate a two-year agreement with them.
Okay. So if you can give us a list of that, we appreciate that.
Sir?
If you can give us a list of all that, we appreciate it to the committee.
Yeah, I will. So the next is the Fraternal Order of Police. We're in negotiations with them. We have a couple sticking points. One is that we definitely have to change the schedule, because the schedule, schedule is costing way too much money. So we are negotiating a three-year agreement with them, because what we want to do is have public safety off-cycle from the rank and file. We've concluded negotiations with the firefighters. Our office is responsible also for preparing the documents for the Board of Estimates, so we're at the phase before the parties sign in order to submit them to the Board of Estimates. And as I said, the fire officers, we've completed negotiations with them and with, with all unions, they, in their constitutions, before, they may reach a tentative agreement with the city, but they have to take the terms to their membership, and the membership will vote it up or down. So the fire officers are in the midst of their ratification meetings today. And then we meet and confer with MAPS, because MAPS is a professional organization. We've completed MAP, meet and confer with them today, and so we'll start working on getting their documents together for the Board of Estimates. And what I'll do is, as you requested, I will provide a list of where we are with each bargaining unit.
Okay. I don't know if it's you or HR, but we need to do a comparison study of surrounding jurisdictions for our workers who live in Baltimore City, because they have some of the lowest wages, and their job is just as dangerous as the police or fire, because now with them cleaning up alleys, and there's drug stashes that they tell them they better not clean up, I mean, they, they face a lot of danger as well. And if we can get their salaries up, that's more money in the general fund, because their piggyback taxes, there's a lot more. It's a shame that when you look at the salaries and where these people live, and you look at the salaries of people who live here, and their salaries are so low, that's a problem for me. So we need to look at how we can do something about increasing the salaries of our employees who actually live in the city.
Well, the average salary for the employees represented by Local 44 is about $34,000, and for Cub, it's about $36,000.
Too low.
And both bargaining units, although I would say that job studies is a management right, however, they have asked, both Cub and ASME have asked for certain of their positions to be looked at, but of course, we'd have to work collaboratively with the Department of Human Resources in order to-
Well, we need to get it done, because I know, I think it was back in the 2000s, where I asked for a comparison study of all salaries, and they did it, but they didn't share it with us. So we want it done again. I don't know if it was HR's responsibility, but somebody needs to get that study done, and we need to know what it is, and we need to get the salaries of these people who pay all of our salaries up, because when you look at it, it's really not right. And their jobs are just as important, picking up trash, digging up the water mains, and putting all that stuff in the ground, and come up with back injuries and all of that, and then the city will tell them, "Well, you hurt yourself, but it's not our fault. You have to find another job, or you have to resign, or you have to retire if you can." And I got plenty of examples of that. So we need to make sure that we treat them just like we treat the Fire Department, the Police Department, and all these other agencies where these workers live elsewhere and not in this city.
We hear you, sir.
Okay?
We hear you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Number 42 was Mr. President's request for written status update on all contracts, including length of time and when they expired. Councilwoman Snead, would it be all right to make a request for the Labor Committee for your consideration to ask that we start getting regular updates from both Ms. Tally and Ms. Moore-Carter on the status of these contracts moving forward? Whatever you think would be an appropriate timeframe, whether that's quarterly or monthly? Is that something that your office, or your offices jointly can, can provide?
Yes, sir. I can provide the contract information.
The Chairwoman Snead's Committee?
Yes.
Which I'm on. Okay. Councilwoman Snead?
You called me, Councilwoman.
Yeah, to both the Budget Committee and Councilwoman Snead's Committee, the Labor Committee.
So that's-
Forty-three.
Okay.
Councilwoman Snead?
Yes, so I have questions for Labor Department. I'll start with you, since you're up. You, you mentioned terminations, and so I'm just curious on how many employees were terminated or left just, just in 2016?
I can get you this, that information, because everyone who's terminated doesn't necessarily follow the process, nor can they, because some people are terminated during their probationary period, so therefore, they don't have a right to a grievance or any kind of termination hearing, but I can get you the ones that were, that came to the Office of the Labor Commissioner.
Please, and do they, the ones that do, they get an exit interview? Do we do exit interviews here?
Yes.
Okay. And so I'm just curious if we could give us a percent of how many leave, because they leave for higher salaries somewhere else. I would be curious to get that number as well.
That's probably information that the Department of Human Resources has.
Okay. And the next question, in the past, the mayor's had a 10-year plan, basically, to downsize the city, though she had a plan to increase the population, and I'm still curious is whether that plan is still in place to decrease by 10 percent? Do you know about?
Well-
Let me answer this about that. So the, the Mayor Pugh is, is going to take a look at the 10-year financial plan, so I can't answer that question yet, but we'll be looking at initiatives that are, have not been completed, and determine which ones the mayor would like to pursue, which ones she'd like to change, and probably also be looking at refreshing the plan, because we, we still have a very large structural budget deficit looking forward, and we're going to need some new ideas in order to, you know, meet the mayor's priorities within a balanced budget.
Okay.
But what I can say is that that's one, one of the things that the unions look at. They look at their membership and whether or not they have the same number of members over a certain period.
Okay. And that's, that's it, all the questions I have for, for you.
Thank you.
Council President?
Thank you. This is for HR. The, on page 332, major budget items at the bottom, can you explain that to, to this committee? The fiscal 2018 recommended budget about the wellness program, and then while you're doing that-
332?
On page 332, and the Agency Detail, Volume One, and then while you tell us about that, you could also let us know about the increase in pending personnel for full wellness administrative positions?
Okay. That was right.
And if you could provide the committee with a detailed breakdown of these positions, including the job description, along with justification for the cost of this. Appreciate it.
Okay.
And we'll give that to you in writing.
Okay. Our Chief of Employee Benefits, Ray, is going to answer that question about wellness.
Okay. Is that up on the screen?
Mr. President, can you please repeat your question? I missed some-
The question is, there's a major budget item that's at the bottom of the page of 332 that talks about a new approach to the wellness program.
Well, we, we started the wellness program in, in 2016. This is the second year of the wellness program, and we, Dr. Tally and I, we are working on a, a new wellness program. We, we are, we are, we are going to propose it to, to the mayor's office, and it would have, it's going to be a different way doing wellness program. We already know where the problems are, and, and we, we are, we are dealing with the incentive, we are dealing with the trust issue, we are dealing with the, the wellness program, there is way, there is a disconnect with it. So we, we are going to work on it and put everything together, and we, as I said, we know where the issues are, and we are working on it, and it's going to be a new platform, 1118, and we are in the middle of the RFP. We have required the, the vendors to give their wellness program, which are already built in, and, and I think they are more meaningful once we integrate our wellness program with these vendors, with the ASO/TPAs, and they can really work with the, with the results when we do biometrics, and they would, and get their clinical team engaged with it, so that we can make our employees healthy, and, and I, I think the goal is give them the quality of life, and give them the, the tools they can work with their health.
What impact did the wellness program have on employees' health so far? What is the fiscal impact? What are the savings on the past contract and what you're looking for? And then you have where you want to have four new FTEs for this wellness program. Now, my question is, okay, the person who had the contract, or have the contract, that they provide the workers, and now we're going to say, "Oh, we're not going to use them no more, we want four administrative," what did they call them? Wellness administration positions, and we're going to do it in-house? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, we are talking about it, but this contract is still intact. It expires December 9th, 2017. But the idea is, you know, the things are not going well with the wellness program, and we want to re-engineer it. The idea is to bring it in-house and work with our ASOs, with, with our vendors, to, to make it a meaningful program. And right now, we have a contractor, and there is several issues with it. As I said, there's a trust issue, there's a disconnect, they bring the, you know, they get biometric, they get the results, but there is no follow-up action, there's no actual engagement, you know, in the following with our employees.
You would get no argument out of me in bringing stuff in-house. But I want to know what the savings is going to be once you bring it in-house?
Mr. President-
And how often would someone be able to access that service?
The, the, ROI, return on investment in the, in the health industry on the wellness program is very difficult, because it's, it's, you can't measure it, how many employees they would be coming to work, they would not be taking sick leave, there will be, there will be more productivity, you cannot measure it. I mean, they, you know, I think the best way to do it with my experience, when we, when we start with a, with a wellness program, we can see where the healthcare cost is today, and moving forward, we can measure the impact. And, and we can also see how many employees are engaged, how many people, you know, you know, right now, there's not much incentive, you know, even though we, we want to give them $75, there's a disinterest. They're not willing to give their blood to get the biometrics done, because incentive is too low. And also, they're worried about their, their reports. So I, I think moving forward, we are going to address those issues, and there are some, you know, positive results in the industry, but if you are looking for a, you know, particular specific dollar saving, it's hard to measure it now, but I think moving forward, we can put some kind of reports and get you the reports.
Okay. Well, if you can give us information on how many employees are using the wellness program, so that we can determine whether we need four positions or two?
Well, right now, you know, we have about 12,300 positions, and the participation rate, and the Dr. Tally just mentioned the number a few minutes ago, as of, for the fiscal year 16, we had only 584 employee, they participated in the wellness program. And it's very low. It's very, very low, and, and that's what, you know, we want to address it.
Can you say that number one more time? I'm sorry.
For 2016, 584 employees out of 12,300. So you can see the participation level is low.
Right, that's what I was wondering, like, wondering how many folks are getting the emails, how many, I thought we could measure it by how many folks are coming out to participate.
We, we are engaging, yeah, we are engaging with about 30,000-plus, you know, members, which would include active employees, and, and we also invite the, the family members. And also, moving forward, we, you know, we can, we intend to bring retirees also if they want to participate.
Can, can I finish up? The wellness program, does it cover high blood pressure and sugar diabetes?
Yes, please.
Okay. Do most of the insurance company pay into this wellness program?
The preventive care is actually, there is no co-payment. It's under the health plan, is free for the employees, if they want to go to their primary care doctor, so there's no charge to it. But we do provide, you know, we had, you know, health fairs, and, and as well as we have wellness fair, and we bring vendors, and they do these tests right on the side.
Okay. But just give us the information on how many people are actually using the wellness program. And get that to the Budget Committee.
The, for, for 2016, 584 people, they used it, and for 2017, we have on record 1,020. But we are anticipating these numbers will increase, and I'm very, very optimistic in 2018 and 19, number will go up significantly, because we are working with the Budget Director, and, you know, we are bringing in, you know, you know, brand-new initiative, and, and focus is to increase the participation, and, and I'm confident we will be able to increase it.
Okay. If I want to go to seek something from the wellness program, where would I go, and how would that look? Where would I go for it?
Well, we do have newsletters, we do have e-blast. We do have, we advertise very heavily. And I don't believe there is any employee who would not know about a wellness program. And we have wellness fair and they, we give them the.
You know about the wellness program?
Yeah, for the. They go to the wellness fair.
But you sent out the, I'm just curious, because you sent out the email blast, but I'm wondering how many are opening up the email blast? Like, when we do Melch and we see how many people, how many it goes out to, and then we see how many people open it up. And to me, that gives a better idea of how many people are just viewing it, staying on the pages. Like, you can track all that. Do we track that?
Yes, we do. We track that. And we can also provide you with numbers either by activity. It sounds like that might be what you're interested in.
Because the folks on the streets, I'm just worried that they are not getting to, they are not able to participate because they're not seeing it as regularly as we are for the folks that spend a lot of time, you know.
Understood, understood. And that was one of the reasons behind our intensive outreach. We went to every city agency, every location, and we made a significant more number of touches. And additionally, the wellness office also went out just to DPW, all the DPW locations, and did 16 mini wellness fairs this year, which attributes to our already increase for this fiscal year. So, but we can provide you by activity numbers.
Okay. All right. Because, you know, I read the wellness stuff that comes across, but I didn't know. Ms. Karen just said that she goes to aerobics across, used to go to aerobics. But I don't know many people who know about that. Because I didn't know nothing about it. No. All right, I'm done.
Just to summarize, Mr. President, you had one request about 10 minutes ago, which was a list of positions.
Yeah.
Marguerite, did you get that?
Karen will give you the questions.
Okay. So that's 44. And then Councilwoman Snead, you wanted?
Oh, yes. Ms. Tally, I was just wondering.
Or I was trying to summarize what your request was from just.
Oh, just if we can get a number, how many folks have the emails? And then what's the percentage of the emails being opened? Of how many emails we have? Does that make?
We also know that not every city employee has access to an email account through the city. Only those employees that have access to those accounts actually receive the emails.
You guys both good? Councilman Pinkett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This question is for Ms. Tally. Previously, we've had the police department come in and mention that one of the impediments to them, you know, properly staffing, excuse me, is the ability to do timely background checks. And I think from one of the committees, it was, a recommendation was made to the police department that they reach out to you all to see if that's a function that could be taken on by your agency. Has that conversation happened? And if it has, is there potential for your agency to assist in some way to expedite these background checks?
Okay, so, yes, we do handle. We aren't, we have been attempting to expedite the background checks. Unfortunately, it is a very arduous process.
Have you had any conversations?
So, no, we haven't had any conversations with police and they haven't had any conversations with us about expediting the background check process. But we're willing to talk to them about it, certainly.
So, so you're saying that there is potential for, is there potential for your agency to do the level of background checks that the police would need? And? I see one saying no, one saying, I mean, which?
Unfortunately, not based on our capacity. We don't have the staff to be able to do that at this time.
But, okay. But I guess another question. This is a function that the police are currently paying some, someone to do.
Yes.
So maybe those resources could be better served if they were, you know, kept within city government to provide, you know, whatever service they're contracting out.
Can you please speak into the microphone?
Just pull it straight up.
What I was saying is some instances, because they're doing background checks of police officers, they hire retired police officers to do the background check, to go speak to your neighbors to see what kind of person you are.
Okay. Got you.
And we don't perform the background checks for any employees or applicants for the city. We outsource those functions.
Got you. Okay. I had one other question. I noticed on page 336, Service 72, Civil Service Management, the, under the category of average working days to fill civil service vacancies. And so the FY '16 actual is 95. But I see the justification. It says that there was a shortage in key staff members that caused that timeframe to be longer than typical.
That, yes, that's a big part of it. The other part of it is that number encompasses all of the processes involved in filling a position. And not all of those processes are within our control. Many of the agencies, first of all, the agencies initiate the recruitment process. And we help them compile, we receive the resumes, we check for minimum qualifications, we develop the list, and we send that information, the eligible list, to the agencies. However, if there's a delay on any part by the agency, it delays us. So a lot of the time is the agencies, is within the agency's scope. And we did an analysis and we determined approximately 19 to 20 of those days of the recruitment process belong to DHR. The remaining part of, the remaining days belong to the agencies.
So, so what you, so this doesn't reflect what your average working days are to fill the vacancies? What, so what is your average, so what is your average working day?
For DHR's functions?
Yes.
It's about 19 to 20 days.
So you're operating within the time, okay. So what are we implementing to improve the agency, you know, portion of the process? Because, I mean, what you're saying is that, you know, out of these 95 days, you know, it only takes you all 20. And so the, what could the agency possibly be doing that it would take 75 days?
They delay on acting upon the list. They may receive a list from us, but they may not use it immediately. Sometimes they hold on it for long periods of time. Sometimes they decide to wait to fill a position. I'm trying to think of some of the other, those are the major, the major reasons. They don't immediately act upon receipt of the list.
Okay. One other question related to this. So, do you ever take an assessment of vacancies or positions that just seem to be difficult to fill?
Yes, we do, on a regular basis.
And what kind of process do you all go through to, I guess, assess that and then to make recommendations to, you know, fill those positions? And can I give an example? And I don't know if this is the case, but I remember that there used to be an issue, I think, in housing, maybe housing inspections, related to maybe electricians or plumbers or something like that. And so it was because of the pay that we were offering for the position, I think it was difficult to identify licensed plumbers or electricians who would fill those positions for the purpose of inspections. One, has that issue been resolved? And two, what, in that scenario, what would we do, you know, from your agency's perspective to change the way that we address, you know, that, you know, filling those types of positions?
Part of the issue with difficult to fill positions in our experience is that, I mentioned before that sometimes the agencies delay in filling positions. A lot of that is because sometimes the agencies do not want their positions to be classified as civil service positions, although they are by charter. So in order for us to get those classifications reassigned to non-civil service, they have to go before the Civil Service Commission. They actually have to have a hearing. And the civil service determines whether or not those positions meet the criteria to exempt them from that. So sometimes that's, that's delay. And we particularly experienced that in the Housing Department and in some cases, in the Health Department, that being the specific reason. And I'm trying to.
So have we resolved the issue related to the inspectors?
As far as I know, yes. Currently, we have addressed those issues with the inspectors' positions.
Okay, so those positions are, there's no issue related to trying to identify?
Not to my knowledge.
And so what was the result, how did we take a situation that was chronically bad and then all of a sudden now those positions are filled? What did we do?
If I'm not mistaken, we reclassified or we upgraded those, some of those positions. And some of the men qual's changed for those positions, if I'm remembering correctly.
The men qual's changed. We did a competitive survey. Men's qual's changed and we did a competitive survey. The competitive survey was done in fiscal year '15. And was ready to be implemented. And was ready to be implemented, however, the agency with budget had a concern. So that's been postponed until January of this year. They've been approved by the Board of Estimates. The increase and they go into effect effective retro back to January for our inspector positions.
Got you. So are there other positions that are similarly challenging that we need to do a competitive survey for?
There's a position in the Health Department, if I'm not mistaken, in the Health Department that we're, that we need to conduct the salary study for.
Is that in general? Is the question in general?
I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Sorry, when you, we were talking about health, excuse me, the Housing Departments particularly. Is that in general? Are there other positions?
Yes, in general.
In general. Last year, we just did a competitive survey for O-Moit IT MAPS positions and IT positions in agencies. That was implemented last year. We are now looking at police 911, 311, and dispatchers. Those competitive. After that one, we have an agreement with the Labor Commissioner to look at what we have Cubs positions in general. So, yes, we are approaching the positions that are causing us some concern competitively to actually see the results.
Can you tell us where we are in reference to, in relation to the police 911, 311?
Yes, we just talked with police on today. That survey, that study starts on July the 15th.
Okay.
Now, it's going to be at least three to four months before we finish it, but it'll start on July the 15th.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Thank you. Ms. Tally, we heard from several agencies tonight, and my colleagues vouch for it, that the problem is in HR. So, and HR saying it's in the agencies. So I'm going to ask the Labor Commissioner, I mean, the Labor Chair, to bring in some of those agencies along with HR so we can get to the bottom of this. Because we're getting sick and tired of finger pointing. And we need to get to the bottom of it so we can get these people hired sooner rather than later.
Understood.
Okay. So, Madam Labor Commissioner, that's another hearing for you. Oversight hearing. All right? Thank you.
I'm sorry, President Young. May I clarify? They said that the problem is with the HR in terms of filling the positions? The time to fill?
Yeah. And not only that, with trying to get the salary that they need for certain positions.
Councilman Pinkett?
Ms. Tally, I just wanted to go back to your, the data that you're using as far as average working days to fill out service vacancies. And I understand what you said before that of the 95, FY '16 actual, 95 days, 20 is typically your agency and then 75 is the. So, when you, when you look at your targets, what, what? Does, is it still 20 that's yours? And then you, how are you making compensation for what you, you're saying that you have no control over? The agency time when you set your targets? Because, I mean, this really is, this is not necessarily a reflection of the agency. It's your data. So it's making you look bad. So how do you, I want to know, what are you all doing to make certain that this number continues to go down and goes down sufficiently? Because what you're saying, it should be closer to 50 or 40, you know, if the agencies are doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Right. And just as an aside too, we are, that has been addressed and it's an ongoing issue that has come up in the City Stat, Operations Liability Stat meeting. So they're just starting to also do a deep dive and finding out what's going on. And in those meetings, agencies have admitted that a lot of the responsibility falls to them and in their delays in filling those positions.
I'm the Chief of Recruitment and Talent Acquisition. So I just wanted to speak to our timeline and how it's established with the numbers that you're referring to. So we use an applicant tracking system, which is NeoGov. And NeoGov tracks the full lifecycle of any of the requisitions from an agency. However, once the agency initiates a requisition inside the system, the system creates a date that it was created, not a date that was approved. So an agency can create a requisition to start a recruitment, however, not approve it for months, depending upon their level of involvement or where they are in the recruiting process. So there are oftentimes numbers that reflect a longer period of time because the agencies have actually initiated a requisition but failed to approve it. Because sometimes the same person who's the initiator is not the approver as well. So you can have one person who is both, or you can have one or two people who do both. So a lot of times, requisitions will sit. Again, that's adding to the number of the full lifecycle. So what we've started to see is a trend. We pull reports monthly and the specialists in my division meet monthly with those different agencies and go over the reports with them to let them know exactly when the requisition was created, when the requisition was approved, and when DHR acted on it. DHR and recruitment acts on the date that it was approved. So we have sometimes requisitions starting in January and the agency didn't approve it until the end of January or first of February. That's a whole 30 days that's gone past. It adds to the full lifecycle of that. So again, so we initiate our portion of it. We do our job, excuse me, do the job announcement, work with the agencies to do supplemental questions. We post for the required 14 days. Once the position has closed, we review the applications. Depending upon the amount of applications that we receive will depend upon the return time. Anything above 100 will probably add to maybe a week or two. But if it's under 100, we give a turnaround time between three to five days. Once the eligible list has been established, the agencies get that list as a referral. That day, that's when our time stops, their time starts again. We have agencies that get an eligible list and do not act on it for four to six months. Thereby, the people on the list have exhausted and have found other employment. So then we have to go back and repost again if possible. So we're trying to get the agencies to be more involved and coherent about exactly how we do, what their responsibility is, where it begins and where it ends. So the reports that we have been submitting to operational stats with the hiring data reflects the full lifecycle, depending upon the agency as well as DHR.
So when an agency makes a request, there's no timeframe related to when they initiate their request and the approval that you're required to get from them in order to move to the next phase?
Well, see, that's on the agency's side, depending upon budget or availability of funds or when the actual hiring manager has acted on it with the HR people inside the agency. So we can't control anything at the agency level. Once the agency initiates the requisition, approves it based upon what their needs are, then we can act. We reach out to the agencies and let them know that you have had a requisition sitting for X amount of days. Please let us know what you want to do. If they haven't done anything with it, what we would start to do is cancel them now. So that way, the full lifecycle will be cut down. So within two weeks, if they have not acted on a requisition, we cancel the requisition. They have to start all over again.
That's what I was getting to. I mean, it sounds like if you, you know, gave a timeframe, two weeks, three weeks, whatever you felt comfortable with, that says that this requisition has a certain shelf life, that it would either eliminate, you know, this timeframe, this lagged timeframe, or it would make the agencies respond quicker to, because they're going to know, okay, if I don't hurry up and respond to this, it's going to expire in 10 days.
Absolutely. And we do the same thing with the eligible list. So once an agency gets the list, they have 60 days. We give them a 30-day warning. We give them a thirty-day warning. Once at thirty days, we say you have thirty days additional before you- before the requisition and we'll close the requisition. That doesn't mean that the list expires, that's to read the requisition, so we can stop the clock. And then when they're ready to hire, they have to put another requisition in and we will refer that same list back to them. But again, we're trying to cut off the timeline so they can see exactly, so we don't have these a hundred or a hundred and more days with the full lifecycle of a recruitment.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Middleton?
Thank you. My subject matter is, of course, about apprenticeships. And I guess going all the way back, the questions, I guess, are kind of twofold between the Labor Commissioner and HR. Now, I remember way back when, when apprenticeship was under the Labor Commissioner's office there in cohort with Human Resources. Somehow, it has been lost in the shuffle when it was moved because of other priorities. I posed this question earlier to Transportation and General Services on just trying to encourage apprenticeship programs because they have shortages in auto maintenance. And you mentioned some of them, electrician, carpenters, the housing inspector. Those were viable, successful apprenticeship programs. And again, these are ways that the city can help the failed school system of those students that graduate from high school and don't go on to, you know, college. They can get hired in an apprenticeship with the city. That's how you train and bring in and fill these positions. It just seems so easy and it's a cost savings for the city. As the past state- as a past state apprenticeship director, the proposals and everything are sitting there in their offices with dust on them. They need to come out again. You know, we- this is just a sure way. The Labor Commissioner, you- we have the one successful still with, I think it's water and wastewater.
Water and wastewater.
And you attend the graduations, you see how successful that program is, and we had them in every agency just about. And, you know, we say this over and over again, what is the problem in not bringing them back, moving them? And I maybe- I'd like you to bring that consideration to the mayor. Put them back with the Labor Commissioner's office. They were successful. And they know how to make it work.
The majority of the apprentices are in the Department of Public Works in water and wastewater, but there's a need for apprentice, for example, in tree trimming and wrecking parks.
Definitely.
It's my understanding that General Services has created some apprentice and they are actually working with the school system to get apprentice in automotive mechanics to work at Central Garage. As a matter of fact, the people in General Services have gone out to the schools and they've actually given the schools updated cars to use. So I agree with you, not every child is going to go to college, but we have to be able to offer them something. And apprenticeship is a way to start a career. For example, back to water and wastewater, there are people in water and wastewater who started out as apprentices and now they're some of the supervisors and managers of the plant. So I agree with you.
I actually know, when they did have the tree trimming, I actually know a person that did the apprentice in that field with the city and they stayed with the city for a long time and then created their own business because that's a need really throughout. So these things are just helping our young- we, you know, we've experienced the riot and unrest. We need to put our young people to work and this is just looking us right in the- in our eyes and... The work Baltimore. Okay. The President just asked me to explain the Work Baltimore Initiative.
What is that?
What is that? Work Baltimore Initiative. Thank you.
You're welcome. It's a new initiative that was conceptualized by Mayor Pugh and the Department of Human Resources. And it is designed to assist unemployed Baltimore city residents gain viable employment and retain that employment. So what we plan to do is have a convention. It's an employment and job readiness convention. It's a one-day convention on September twenty-seventh. But prior to that, we plan to provide residents with thirty days of job readiness activities. And we also plan to provide them with job readiness activities during the conference. And there are approximately five job readiness activities during the conference and ten job readiness activities pre-conference. So we are going to be providing them with information on how to complete an application, how to create a resume, how to develop a cover letter, how to interview, how to ask questions, how to answer questions, what you should and should not wear. We also plan to have job readiness activities for persons who have been incarcerated and are looking to transition back into the workforce. And all of those things that we believe, as a result of the information that we have, that unemployed residents need help with getting back into the labor market.
And that's- sounds like the beginning phases and then the next phase two would have to- just listening to the answers from the Department of Transportation, it just lets me know that the mayor will have to make that decision to say, "Transportation, get an apprenticeship going," with these other agencies. The charge has to come from, of course, the mayor. And as the council, we are urging that, you know, that charge is- tries to be met. Thank you.
Currently, the Department of Public Works has seventy-four apprentices.
Public Works is, you know, on the ball, but that's just with that one program. But like I said, we had it and all the things that you are- that you need help with in hiring, the apprenticeships are there. It's right in our face. So we need the charge from the mayor to demand these agencies to start apprenticeship programs. I think the funding is there and it's going to be a win-win for overall to save money and then you're also helping our young people get careers.
Is there- did any of our colleagues up here know about that program?
No, I didn't.
So this is the same one. I tried to actually host a- something with Moad, a job, gosh, a job fair, and that's when I found out about this. Is it with Moad? The Mayor's Office of Employment Development?
Yes.
Yeah. And so they said they're putting full force into that so they couldn't help out with something that we were trying to do in the district, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman Snead. But what's important to this council and important to me is transparency. And we need to be brought up to speed on any new initiative that's going on in the city. And I don't know how you get that information out, Karen and Karin, but it's all about transparency. None of my colleagues knew about that. It took Ms. Kim Truheart to ask me to ask that question, but I asked Councilwoman Middleton because she had the mic. I mean, this is something that we should know about. We shouldn't have to hear this for the first time, you know? I mean, if our constituents came to us and asked us about what that was, I couldn't have told them until tonight.
I sent out over a month ago a notification to all of the city council members about Work Baltimore.
Have y'all seen those? She sent them out to all the council people. I know I haven't seen it. Well, let me give you my direct email address. It's BCyoung@BaltimoreCity.gov. And if I get it, all the council people will get it. Didn't y'all get it, guys?
Nope. I'm searching for it. No. He's checking his email.
None of you received it?
I check all my email myself personally. I didn't get it.
Well, unlike the councilmen- councilmembers, I have a direct personal email address. I'm not saying that my staff might not have gotten it. Y'all haven't gotten it? Because they normally alert me. But if you use my email address, I will get it and I will make sure that I circulate it.
Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. On page three thirty-eight, Service seven seventy-two, you've got a couple different items for Compensation Analyst Two and Three and Compensation Manager. Am I safe to assume that it's these people who are tasked with understanding what a competitive salary is for a given position?
Page three thirty-eight?
Yes, ma'am. Service seven seventy-two.
Volume one. Yes, the positions listed, the Compensation Analysts are actually conducting the compensation studies across the city. Each analyst is assigned to specific agencies and I think each analyst has, I don't know how many, three to five agencies that they're responsible for providing-
Two eleven.
Two eleven?
Two thirty-two.
Okay, providing-
Not all agencies are created equal in size?
That they're responsible providing to- for providing services for.
And I guess I'm trying to understand what those analyses are based on. We have heard twice in here today from other agencies that they are not able to get the kind of employees that we need to do certain positions because the city is unwilling to pay a competitive salary. And in addition to hearing that in here twice from different agencies, particularly pertaining to engineers, designers, architects, I have heard the same thing countless times from the Department of Housing, from the top of the department down to the immediate supervisor of positions like Code Enforcement Inspector, that we just can't keep employees. Who is determining what the salaries should be for these positions? Because I imagine that we don't have too much trouble retaining good employees for the job of Compensation Analyst Two and Compensation Analyst Three and Compensation Manager. Why are we able to get certain people to fill critical roles in the city and not others? And keep them there?
Thank you.
You used two examples. One was engineer and then you went to the Compensation Analysts. It just happens that Compensation is in the very same boat as engineers. And the fact that the last hires that we had, we can't find enough trained Compensation Analysts. And when they are trained, we can't afford them. So that we actually trained our analysts. And so it takes three years to grow an analyst. Four, five of the eight positions on my staff are in their second year. It'll take another year. And so competitive, we have to tell you, we kind of feel that one too. When it comes to the engineers, however, we called DPW, Transportation and Housing together to talk about the engineer Transportation had requested that we look at the salaries of engineers. When we called them together and went through the problems that they were having, at the end of that meeting, they agreed that there's not a salary problem, but the problem that they were having was a recruiting problem. And so Chief Carter was at that meeting as well and walked through the flexibility that they have. And so as a result of that, Transportation, Housing, and DPW withdrew their request for a competitive salary request. That was just in January of this year.
Do- can we- can we have a hearing on this in the Labor Committee? This thing- I can't have one agency telling me the opposite of another on an issue in the same room in the same day. I can't handle that. So I would just like to respectfully request that the Labor Committee, which I'm not a member of, hold a hearing on it and I will gladly attend and ask these same questions in it.
Okay.
Thank you. And I will put in a resolution to that effect if necessary in order to make that happen. I appreciate it, Ms. Chairwoman. Are we, I hope, and I imagine we are, analyzing the cost of turnover in certain positions? Is it possible that despite the analysis that was done in January, that perhaps we could create a slightly greater incentive and improve our ability to recruit if our salaries were a little bit higher? Are we suffering great costs because of turnover and training of new employees?
I'm really picking and choosing and thinking quickly before I speak.
Sure.
Because turnover is one of the factors that we look at when we're looking at competitive salaries.
Okay.
And so when it came to engineers now, again, DPW, Transportation and Housing agreed that it was not a compensation problem. Wasn't a problem with money, that the ranges were sufficient. And the reason we called them together, because we did the same thing, like I said before, with IT. So there are certain positions that are subject to the fluctuations of market, that's supply and demand. And so those are the positions that we have identified. So that would be IT. The ones I didn't list before is public health representatives, medical doctors. We looked at them, look at each one of them that I have named. It's just the engineers that was withdrawn, so we did not get to complete it. But yes, turnover is a part of what we look at whenever we say there is a need for us to give greater attention and money to a particular job family.
I guess I'm still a little hung up on this because we do have plenty of architectural and engineering firms in the city and they seem to be able to retain and have new employees on a regular basis. And so I would say HR probably has something to do with the ability to recruit employees and get them into work for us. I mean, am I wrong about that?
I'll yield the floor to Chief Carter on that.
I guess, yeah, we can't put recruitment solely on the agencies. We have an agency that's devoted to hiring. I'm making a little too much sense?
Now, DHR does have some responsibilities for the recruitment initiatives that go on across city agents. Oftentimes, sometimes we don't know about all of the opportunities that are available across city agencies. Because the recruitment function, like many functions- Like many functions within DHR are decentralized. So the agencies are responsible for a lot of the functions that you would probably assume that DHR has exclusive responsibility for, and we don't. And in those situations, we provide guidance and support. However, if they are advertising or recruiting for a position that we know nothing about, then we absolutely have no control over that. We do try to have responsibility and control over the civil service positions. However, I will tell you, it's a very different story when it comes to the non-civil service positions. And that appears to be the positions that they have the most difficulty or they deem hard to fill.
So within DOT and DPW and DGS, are engineers and architects, designers, planners not considered civil servant positions?
They are civil service positions, yes. Those positions are.
Okay. I don't know exactly what my request is here, but it's clear to me that if we're spending a million dollars on designs in one year, that we could be paying one designer in-house a hundred thousand dollars to do, then there's a real disconnect in the value statement that that makes about our budget, which is, as I can tell, scarce. The other- I'm going to move on- The other, I'm going to move on to my other question because I don't know exactly what else to ask here except to have a hearing and to, I don't know. SMA workers, these are seasonal maintenance workers, who, what is the period that an SMA worker is allowed to work for the city without becoming a full-time employee, being compensated the same as other workers doing the exact same job as them and earning benefits?
Madam Leader of Commissioner.
We have agreements in the Local 44 contract and in the Cub contract for seasonal maintenance workers and other types of temporary workers. And in the Local 44 contract, there's a side letter agreement that they can stay in place for approximately two years. And at the end of that two-year period, they have to have a permanent position or you have to let them go. And in the Cub contract, its less time is six months.
And what is the rate of retention or conversion into full-time employees at the end of that?
That I'm not sure. The majority of the temporary workers are either in the Department of Public Works or the Department of Transportation and I can get the information from them.
I would like to make a formal request, the rate of retention-
Sure.
-of SMA workers beyond the period that they are allowed to be on as SMA workers?
So, number 46, rate of retention for SMA workers after they've exceeded the two-year period?
At the end of the period, yeah. Or, or in the case of Cub workers, six months.
So, just rate of retention for SMA workers after they've exceeded their respective period?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bear with me. Mr. Klein is familiar with the fact that sometimes I find myself fascinated by the relationship between numbers, even more so than the numbers themselves. In Housing and Community Development, there's a service, 749, Blight Elimination. This service supports neighborhood revitalization and mixed-income community development by eliminating the blight caused by vacant and abandoned properties and returning them to productive use. This service is an important component of the city's neighborhood development initiative, combining the efforts of this service, code enforcement and the Office of Home Ownership. So, this is a, this is a program that does good stuff, mostly inside in an office, requires detailed knowledge, expertise and probably has a fair amount of translation to the private sector. And when I took the 52 salaried positions and the total salary budget of 3. roughly $4 million, it turned out that the people in that office earned an average of $66,440. And that made me think of the city council. Because that's about what we make. And so, sure enough, if you take the city council's 68 budgeted positions and the total salary allotment for the city council, it works out to $67,937. There are two more people working in Human Resources than there are working for the Baltimore City Council. You have 70 salaried positions. They earn an average of $79,261, or roughly $12,000 more than everybody who works for the city council and $13,000 more than everybody who works for Blight Elimination. Why is Human Resources worth more?
Why is Human Resources worth more?
Yeah. I mean, just in terms of general compensation, and I mean, I'll put it in further perspective. There's 64 people working under Administration, Control and Communications for the Mayor's 64, those 64 people earn an average of $73,855, which is about $5,000 more than the city council. And I'm sure if the president was here, he'd contest whether or not that was a worthwhile distinction. But that's still 6,000, well, a little over $5,000 less than the average for Human Resources. So, I get what you're saying in terms of you're having trouble keeping people even with the salaries that you're paying, but you're paying even more than we're paying. And we're keeping people.
So, what, the best answer that I'm able to provide you is that every single position within Baltimore City Government is assigned to a classification of work. The classification of work is based on the job specifications that were submitted for that particular positions or group of positions. So, the salaries are based on, the salaries are tied to a salary range based on the relative worth of a position. Now, I don't necessarily determine the relative worth of the positions. The, the actual duties and responsibilities determine what they are. So, based on what those, those job classifications are, they are tied to the salary ranges and that's how the salaries are determined.
But you're the guy deciding the salary ranges, right?
We're deciding the salary ranges based on the market and compensation studies, correct? We just don't make up the numbers. We are, we do determine those.
Yeah, okay. Well, okay, so, this was just one that I picked by, you know, semi-random from Housing and Community Development. Let me look through the book more and let me see if I can find some more examples, perhaps better than the city council as backup, for positions that have more traditional private sector equivalents.
Sure.
And see whether or not we can circle back and find out why this discrepancy happens to be the way it is.
Okay.
Can I say that?
No.
Okay.
Councilman Pinkett.
Yeah, I just had a quick question for Mr. Klein. Just curious, as a part of the budget process, is there, is there a part of the process whereby we take a historical look at agencies' use of contractual services and then, you know, make a determination if historically, you know, we're paying a certain amount for a specific task that should then, you know, that now we should maybe consider making this an in-house service as opposed to continually paying over and over and over a different firm for a position that we, you know, we can look back over years and see that this is a service? And, I mean, if it's happening, I'd like to hear.
Yeah. I, I would say, not systematically, but we, we encourage agencies to consider, you know, what's the most cost-effective way of fulfilling your mission? And we do have a lot of cases where agencies will come, they'll either say, we think, you know, we've looked at this function and we think it would be less expensive and, you know, we'd be, we'd perform just as well or better if we contracted out and vice versa. We've had a number of cases, including, you know, IT is, is the biggest example where they're, they're wanting to convert contractual positions to civil service positions and they've shown us why they think that's more cost-effective. And we take an interest in that because, well, first of all, we want to be as cost-effective as possible. We also want to make sure that agencies are taking everything into account. We've had traditionally, well, I shouldn't say traditionally, but in the past, we've seen agencies, they'll look at salaries, but they, they aren't considering all the benefits, the legacy costs of civil service positions. So, we, you know, we've developed calculators to help people understand the full cost of positions. So, we want to make sure it's an apples-to-apples comparison. And there are a number of reasons for, you know, contracting out a function. I mean, it could just be cost. It could be that it's a, you know, it's not a permanent function. Maybe there's just a, every year, we have a spike in service need. Might be something so specialized that it doesn't make sense for us to, to have that kind of capability on staff full-time. So, there are a number of considerations that go into that, but we, we definitely pay attention to it. And like I said, we encourage our agencies to look, you know, review that on a regular basis. What's the best way to deliver the service?
Right. And yeah, and, you know, I'm, I'm new to this, but it just seems as though there's, there's really not an incentive for agency to self-monitor in that way, but that, you know, you know, finance working with HR should, and clearly, I'm not talking about the pipe, the spikes where there's just one, you know, one year or two year where we, we need to, but I'm talking about, you know, in agencies like DPW, DOT, I mean, where, you know, for lack of a better term, they are firms eating off of city dollars. And we know it. Why do we continue to feed them when, you know, it should be a service that we, we know we're going to have this? You know, because of your history, you know there's going to be some contractual services in this budget before you even look at the next fiscal year. And, and the firms know that they're going to get, you know, they can anticipate that this is going to be an expense. I mean, at some point, we should be making an assessment of what these services are and saying, okay, you know, we can do this. We know we're going to be doing it for the next 10 years, we might as well start doing it now.
Well, yeah, I would say, I think agencies do have incentive to look at more cost-effective ways of doing business. Their budgets are under a lot of pressure. They want to perform better at the same or lower cost if they can.
But do they adjust the contractual service? I mean, it seems like they, they might adjust some other stuff, but the contractual services are just going to keep going.
Yeah, I mean, but there's no, there's no guarantee that city government, city government can do a function better than a contractor. I mean, it's a case-by-case analysis that, that has to take place and frankly, you know, there is more flexibility with, oftentimes with contracts than with the, you know, with the HR system and those rules. So, again, it's a case-by-case issue.
Right. I agree. It's not a perfect scenario. It just seems as though we, we should just be, and I said, I know you said that there is a process by where, but it just seems like we should be more aggressive at identifying, you know, those opportunities.
Understood.
Councilman Dorsey.
I will just kind of reiterate that a little bit by saying, it sounds to me like the Department of Finance is putting the burden on the agencies to come to the table with cost-saving, savings measures and to initiate the discussion about that. And that the service that you're providing back is still based on like a, a scope of things like benefits and pension and salary, perhaps without taking into account the broader social implications of things like every single road redesign project that we do in the city being deferred because the agency doesn't have the capital on hand to, to hire a, an outside consultant at will instead of being able to just produce all of the designs that the city needs in order to make all of the improvements that we need to every road in the city on an ongoing basis. And how to be able to do that would positively impact the city in a myriad of ways that are not accounted for in benefits packages.
Well, Councilman, I, I know you, you formed an assumption that we're wasting a lot of money on, on design and architectural services. I think we need to look at that more closely before we can draw that conclusion.
Okay.
You can come to the same hearing.
Yeah, you could come to the same hearing.
And you've, and you've asked for information that I think will help us understand that better.
Thank you. And the last thing I want to ask about, in a similar vein to, to the Department of Finance working with the HR and other collaborating agencies to achieve a common goal of efficiency and all that, is kind of for the Department, what is the Department of, you know, you prepare the budget and help to guide these outcomes, these objectives that we are pursuing as a city, at the same time that the budget, you know, much of what we hear is like, yeah, we're strapped for cash. You know, we need more money. We are a majority black city, surrounded by no majority black jurisdictions, and an assessment of our city employee roles show that we are paying non-city residents, on the whole, 50% more than city residents who work for Baltimore City. And at the same time, if, with a black median income of $34,000 in the city and a white median income of $61,000, if we were to increase the black median income to the white median income, it would yield, by my calculation, about $140 million more just in income tax from those individuals. How is it that we are not already collaborating in a very deliberate way to make one of our outcome bases increasing black wealth in Baltimore City? Because if we're not doing that, this thing looks like a racist document to me. Just an observation. Colleagues, any other questions? All right, that concludes tonight's hearing. We will go into recess and reconvene tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM.